Every Sunday morning, I wake up and I'm getting ready to go to church from 6:00 noon to 12:00 noon. Sometimes I'm sitting over here in the parking lot, I don't know where is my wife? I'm sitting out there listening to Larry Tinsley. From Sunday Morning Prayers, Larry Tinsley.
It's my pleasure to pray for this event tonight, every head by the streets. Father God, we thank you so much for allowing us to back this church with our outstanding pastor, Reverend Larry White, of course, Reverend Ray Sharp White. We thank you for being one of three for bringing this all forward tonight. We pray for the people in this audience here at our effort. We pray for the people in the listening audience of V103. They will be both educated and enlightened, Father. By the events that will unfold here tonight, we pray for our children, Father, our precious resource. We sit in this prayer tonight asking that you come within with the blood of Jesus, and that your hurt, harm, and danger will come to them. Father, come within with your care, and that no other life will be lost in the sins of violence. We pray for the angels of heaven, for the camp itself around our children, Father, that you will bless them, keep them in your care. Bless this event tonight, have it be everything that you wanted to be, and present it with your praise, honor, and glory, which you so deserve. If you will do this offer and ask to meet them in the name of Jesus, your Son and our Savior, if you will be with this prayer tonight, God say, Amen, God bless you. Oh, and I want to introduce our moderator for this evening, and you can hear him. Okay, our moderator is for this evening. The number one announcer, the number one morning show on V103 that you listen to every morning, is hosted by the one and only Ryan Kerr. Let's start with Ryan Kerr. And his host, the audience in the house, and certainly the audience as well, everybody in the hall, for your presence. Thank you.
I'm going to let Mo start, because the last time I was in this church was when I married my grandpa. So, just getting a chance to get myself together. But I do want to say that the rain did not stop us tonight. I think it's very appropriate that this young man has on a hoodie, my son has on a hoodie, because all they want to do is be protected from the raindrops. That's all they want to do is be able to get someplace in peace. And as we gather here today, that's all we want to do is have some peace. Because we're troubled right now as a city, as a community. We're troubled and we're looking for solutions. So, I'm going to let Mo start this thing off, and then I'll join you in just a second. So, pray for me on that, all right?
Let's everybody, just for a second, reflect on, you know, things that touch us in the moment. All right, this whole week, I have this script here, I'm not forgetting about it completely, because I'm just going to go ahead and talk off my mark. I'm Mo, I'm ready, thank you so much for coming today. We wanted to have this conversation, this conversation, just out of conversations we've been having in this studio all weekend long. And especially Saturday night, when whatever you were doing around 9:00, 9:30, you got stopped to hear the unfortunate news that they found George Zimmerman not guilty in the murder of Trayvon Martin. And I'll never stop saying murder, because to me, that's exactly what it was. So, just for the hosting reasons, if you have a question that you want to write down, so that we can make sure we get to it, just simply raise your hand at somebody before you index cards and something to write with, and then that way we'll be able to do it expeditiously. So, we're going to talk about trying to heal tonight, about ways to move forward. You know, we've been hearing a lot on television, people just talking and not really talking about the things that matter. This is not about race, and we all know what it is exactly about, right? So, we need to find solutions on how we're going to move forward, what we're going to talk to our kids about, how we're going to get them to heal. There are a lot of children in this audience that this is going to be their civil rights movement, right? It's going to happen differently than what we normally know, but this is their civil rights movement. This is what they need to know about. It'll happen on the internet, it'll happen in their groups. But we need to teach them the best way to handle this situation, because you know, every one of us could have a child named Trayvon. And then my daughter could be Rachel, on the phone, and whoever was in the car. So, it's not just a conversation for young men, it's a conversation for black families, black mothers, everywhere. So, we just want to say thank you so much for coming out, bringing the weather to have this important conversation. And I'm going to hand it back to Ryan now, if he's ready. Okay, we're great. And I will go forward with the program, and again, thank you for coming.
Thank you all. So, we all hear all of the members of the V103, every OK staff, and concerned members of the community, to look at how we can help each other deal with these emotions. Is anyone having, as they say, a feeling right now, you're frustrated by show of hands? You're confused about what happened, and it's sad, but you're trying to figure it all out? You know, for a lot of young people here tonight, this is the first time that many of you have actually felt the injustice. There are a lot of us in the room who know about what Dr. King went through. A lot of us have grown up and had racism happen to us in our lives. But for a lot of the generations right now, they don't, they don't understand that. They don't get the dogs and the Secretary of War, the families, they don't understand any of that, because it's never happened to them. But now this Trayvon Martin case, and let me give you a rest. It's a George Zimmerman case. Even though, as we watched it, it seemed like Trayvon Martin was going on trial. George Zimmerman was going on trial. And what happened transpired with Trayvon after many of us. I said today on television, that as a black man, my life has now changed because of this verdict. Because every day when I wake up at 3:30, it's this black door. I have to go to my garage, I have to lock my door, and what if somebody would have happened upon me and asked me what am I doing there, and confronted me, I could be the next Trayvon. It faces all black men, no matter what the age, I want them to stand up right now in this room. I want you, if you are an African-American male, to stand up in this room right now. Because I say that the black man is my king. And we are in this room because this is our community, these are our children. We are Trayvon Martin. You may see. So, we have a panel, we have experts, we have our own personalities, we have dictators from the afternoons right here, we have eager for the mid-days, they're all going to be a part of this. And if you've ever gone to one of these meetings, we don't want it to be something where everybody who's on the panel does all the talking. And the people who have all the questions and all the emotions go home feeling the exact same way they felt when they walked in. So, we want to hear from the young people, we want to hear from the mothers, we want to hear from the fathers today. And one of the things that we talked about was how do we explain this to our children? How do we get them to understand what happened? And we're going to get into that, and it's going to be a serious discussion. We do have some house rules. Jean, I know that you, can you handle the rules? Because we do have some rules, this is in the church. No food or drink allowed in sanctuaries, so you have snacks. Except for coverments, which we all came in my grandma's purse, that was attached to that piece of Kleenex back in the day. Somebody knows who's like me, okay. No profanity whatsoever, no matter what the emotion. Questions will be addressed from index cards by the moderator, we ask you to be respectful. We know that your point is the best point in the road, we understand that. What you want to say is better than anybody else's point. But we ask you to contain that to 60 seconds. Be respectful, no signs allowed, only one person talking at a time, and please do not interrupt. If you have a cell phone right now, it may be the hottest ringtone in the land. This is the church. And we will feel some type of way if your phone goes off. No pictures or video recording other than the allowed news media. And there will be a live broadcast, so please no side discussions. And there's a timer of one minute for comments and questions. So, Mo, you want to bring our camera?
So, when we want to have this conversation, I thought it would be so great to actually have somebody who's been in the courtroom every day, who has been with the family, who understands how to explain this the best way possible. And that is Darryl Parks, who is from the law firm of Parks and Crump Associates, and they represent the Martin family. It's going to be the whole bio, but I'm just going to tell you this, he's a very accomplished attorney, and this was a case of a lifetime for their firm to acquire and to go through. And so, I really don't want to spend a lot of time on, you know, where all the, you know, particulars, but to allow them to come to the mic and speak to us about the tragedy of Trayvon's death, and also the tragedy of the verdict. Everybody, if you guys can tell, if you can tell.
Good evening. Very happy to be in the lineup today, with my family, who is still around. Y'all, thank you for seeing y'all. Thank you all for coming. So, what to talk to you about, I'll try to, which I can take a few questions before I have to leave tonight. We are on our way to New York, I think they're not coming yet, but they're there right now, on their way to New York for the weekend. Really get the story out. As y'all know, last February 26th, Trayvon Martin was done down in Sanford, Central County. You know, Sanford, Sanford's a very small town. About 15% black, and thus definitely saw the real people just saw. Trayvon, he didn't get some ice and some skill, he was on his way back. A guy named George Zimmerman, who had been appointed the life captain, the woman who watched, saw him, thought he was suspicious, called 911, sent security to watch for everything about him. Trayvon was on the phone with his friend, decided to try to root the guy. The guy jumped out of his car and comes after Trayvon. Trayvon was unarmed. Trayvon, originally was some type of stuntman, Trayvon was shot, dead, seven, in his heart with hollowed-in bullets. The bullet shattered, part of the blood began to run into his lung. And he died between one and three minutes on the ground there, at a place called the Tru-List Land Place. His dad, Tracy Martin, his girlfriend, who lived in that complex, was not home at the time. Trayvon, we're not coming back, obviously. The police never went down to his house to see if anyone was home. And he went to the morgue as a donor. Trayvon contacted our lawyer, our attorney, they had been coming to talk to me about the case. You know, you see so much violence in our community, we all must become changeable. And so, and Ben and I were talking, and he was like, boy, you know, what can we do? You know, we're someone, we sue, we sue day in, day out, every hour. So, in this case, we're really with that, we're really in difficulty, why you're going to come in this case? We wanted to help, because he had referred, I have some friends of ours. And so, my law partner, I'm cutting another Trayvon, named Natalie Jackson. We have seen Natalie, she only had access from Sanford. Natalie knew the lady later, it's always been a little somewhere that you're not from, you just learn a little later. And so, we looked at our lawsuit, the other guy, you know, so he's been here on TV, and he's a lawyer. She had to put together this column for a 19th, that's a recent big progress request. So, we sued. She jumps on the phone, calls us, we put on a cover story, and she's trying to explain why he can't leave. All the time this thing is going to teach you, and it's important that you kind of know how this story began, because it's true to this stuff. And every point during the cover-up was the crime. Y'all been hearing everyone say, the cover-up was worse than the crime? That's what made the case so big. And often, they're like, so what made the case so big? Well, they kept trying to cover it up. And I think it might be juicy, right? There were people coming out, saying things, and I had to get to the roots, and they didn't understand. And they had to issue it with the juror, and the lawyer was there on Monday. Tracy Martin, Trayvon's father, was not giving up. He was not giving up. He wasn't bad, but he was not giving up. He was not going to let this guy not get arrested. So, we began to use our platform, and that began with local media, that might have to be compared to local media, we used those people we had, some press conferences. We've always encountered some very high profile, some right type cases here in the Marlin, we've been to boot camp, and we've had some other cases where we have been involved in civil rights court. For lawyers, you know, civil rights court is not very popular. So, you only take a few of them, because the threat is probably stopping everybody. But we've believed very strongly in the new tax system, we've used our platform, we contacted Al Sharpton. And now, I was a child, continuing to embrace Al Sharpton, and I've watched people in this case. I didn't like how you could see them trying to say so much about it, but let me tell you about Al Sharpton. Al Sharpton took the Maryland case, he went with it, he stayed with it, and he kept moving. And as he continued to talk about it, other people continued to talk about it, Michael Bayes, Tom Jordan, different ABC News, and we used our contacts, people in the national ABC News. Then, he take a petition, 2.2 million people signed a petition to arrest George Zimmerman. It would end in a big, right, the city was under a town of 50,000 people, we had a right of 40,000 people. But that rally was important, because some of y'all, maybe if you're a small town, in Florida, Florida only 15% black. So, the half, that half horn of people, meant the people were crying out. And I can tell you now, a person from Florida, that was one of our proudest days of the career, to see people step up and where they did. From there, we had the big rally, and then on that same very day, our Republican gentleman jumped to the rich side. He came to Sanford that day, and appointed a special prosecutor. Now, the special prosecutor had taken some kicks this week. Now, I want to say something good about it for this reason. You must always remember that the prosecutor from that district refused to prosecute. Refused to prosecute. And thus, she came in and she prosecuted for kicks. Now, she took some hits during the trial, because although it was improper for Martin to do so, he made sure that a jury knew that the out-of-town's came in to prosecute this case. Now, that's a problem right now, because what he was attempting to do was draw a divide between the jury and the prosecutors. And so, that became a huge issue. Well, finally, George Zimmerman was arrested, and that was, that became a big thing. Well, one thing that we've done for this family is we have built a platform for them to go around the country. So, you may have seen it on Doctor Field, The View, tomorrow on U S C O, on all of the networks, San Juan, San Juan, San Six One, and then you'll probably see it on some other cable networks by Friday. Well, this is great, as y'all know, now, it's not very often that we as African-Americans, when we have a tragedy like this, have this type of platform. And they are using their platform, and use the phone to pay. Before I say more, I want to thank a few people who really helped me, I enjoy V103, I enjoy my time with you. 138, I appreciate you taking it as well, with us, and I enjoy being with you. And I think I have a little official, shows respect to little officials who are here, and I got right into my talk, and I got here. But let me tell you now about the trial. You know, so many people have questions about what went wrong, what happened. Well, several things happened before the trial ever started. The defense did an incredible job of painting the jury, well, let me see if I can get a radio, blue jury. Because what they did was they could always picture about, they could picture of Trayvon into the public domain, so people would see them, and their minds would contain it. They made it between them, they have a drug image of Trayvon, or they would know so much information, they could circle the jury. And so, we ended up getting the jury that you got. Because everyone else may go out and question that, they said they knew anything about it, they were ex. So, you end up with a legal producer, your legacy. We go from there, and you start to talk about what was the case about? Because the case, in essence, has been broken down, and a few people from Chicago are watching this pretty good TV now. You've seen that they made the situation about whether or not George Zimmerman should have followed Trayvon. Well, this jury took the issue even further. They talked about who was spring, if it was a fight, somebody was springing for him. Well, there are a lot of different approaches, but the biggest problem in the case is George Zimmerman is the only person that's alive. The only person that's alive. And so, you go through the case, and they have to issue the springs, you also heard the issue of how hurt was George Zimmerman. And that became a big controversy, because part of what the defense did was these pictures of blood on his head. And it took them about four hours later, when the evidence case for the Stanford Police Department took pictures of him, he was, he was swollen, already worn down. The biggest, probably, the biggest problem with this case, and the witness jury heard this case, it became very obvious. At least there was one juror, that they identified George Zimmerman clearly. There was one piece of, there was another theory that, rather than currently trying to establish this case, they were the fact of creating this in a George. As the perfect guy, the type of guy who fights crime. And if y'all heard the last witness in the case, you know, a white lady and two black women trying to break in the house, come in the house. And she talking about George came over, made her pay a lot, so kind of. Well, excuse me, the trial had no place, had no place. And so, if you put that type of character evidence in, which the big issue was, the prosecutors were trying to stay away from the character evidence, Trayvon said to me, you're going to go open the door. And so, instead of waiting for that evidence, they tried to be very conservative, but as y'all know, the defense was very sleek in this case. Every chance they could slide a little bit in there, they did. Even when we also have a brother taking state and professing, hi George. We humanized George. Well, practically, they demonized him, is how they beat him, or something like that. But George is not being humanized. So, when you listen to that juror speak about the case, she really talks about, she said, well, don't, clearly. Remember the question that she was asked, and let me say this, as a lawyer, we actually never comment on George. I mean, really, up until when she spoke out one night, everything, I think that was around 10:00, it was supposed to be. And it crossed the board. And we would say, you know, respect the verdict, and we don't want to let the public jury comment on it. Thank you for service, for love, you know, we want the next step. Well, she crossed the line, so she, if she didn't understand what she said, then that opened up a whole door of issues that made people continue to analyze to this very thing. So, that was the case, and, you know, when people ask, you know, what happened, the cause of the verdict? I guess it's a combination thing, I think, one, it was the jury, two, it was an evidence in the case. Both, but it was enough and not enough, number two of the laws. And number three, some of the rules that we have to control, but one rule they're protecting is, I'm sorry, but when you have the people who serve this jury, and you show a young black man, muscle, awkward picture of him taking his power shot, that's not something that you can live by, that picture came to evidence. And so, when they started to draw the comparison, nice, protective neighborhood, George Zimmerman, and this young black kid, muscle, shirt off, walking in the night. This was for a young, so, that's how it ends up here. You know, we continue this journey today, of, just so you know, with the family that is doing. Little boys, they were certainly completely devastated out of verdict, without question. And on my advice, going out the door. And, you know, some, some people try, so why would they do it? Or, one, they had to get back to Miami, they wanted to go to church today, but two, what would it show for them to sit there and accept that from the other one? We had now been learning the facts, so, that's, that's part of it, and they, they don't move forward. They have been working on the Trayvon Martin Foundation, those who want to support us, the Trayvon Martin Foundation.org, Trayvon Martin Foundation.org, which is part of the Miami Foundation down in Miami. There's a few teaching points that I think that we can get right now, from this situation. Number one, it's important, y'all, that you have some awareness of the laws. So often, all of us in the legislature come, we don't pay attention. Now, at least I know your paper, your paper does come, your lips don't very well. You should monitor the things they're doing. Number two, you're going to have to have hands of people who are representing you, and the laws are there in place. Probably most importantly, jury service. Jury service, and he's how I like to say it. If I have to be on trial anyway, it's terminal, civil, or whatever, I will sure my people, as well. And so, the next time you get involved, don't make excuses, don't say I have something to do, I don't think I'm visiting you on that. That's all it is. That's all it is. So, the rules for the jury service, don't do it. Stronger the word, be there, because on your day, you weren't sure like you were settled, said, all right, either. Versus something, he's not, that Trayvon Martin, somebody was too eager. Somebody was too eager, and that's a problem. Also, you know, the other part that came out, as you listen to, listen to what George was spoken out, is, it's not just she had a vote for the opinions, but her background was out of the verse. I just felt so, so amazed about how she talked about her son. I mean, wow, she felt that again, really, really. So, that really got to me, the way she tried to portray that sister, that sister was courageous. So, I want to say a few more things before I have to leave, from all about the things. And what is that with Harrison, talk for a good one?
Yeah, can't do it, I think, that's, can't do it, Mike, I'm sure.
So, come over here, we're going to have a question. We're going to keep the questions to one minute.
Hopefully shorter than that.
Now, I need y'all to question, be sure that the people that were on the radio this morning, they were. I think they were coming, they were having questions, but that's okay. Let me say something, y'all, the other great part about this here is that out of all of us that are in a concern about what's going on around us, we don't see enough of that in our community. So, this family is very encouraged by a gallows like the, I was talking to this river fool today, around 12 noon, and was told that I was going to be here this hour, but she said, oh, love to you all, keep being gay, like this. Give us your questions.
So, we have a question right here.
Hello, I'm Sonia Campbell, and my question is, I have a Trayvon Martin. His name is Charles Jones, he's 17. At this point, I'm scared to allow him to go outside the house. How do I be careful?
Well, I think the thing that you have, we have to live, you can't live alone, you have to do it all, is you have to tell them some things to encourage it. Tell them, you know, be careful, they don't go over the caution, but be careful about the radar, what you're doing. And for example, this situation, we really don't know what happened between Trayvon and George Zimmerman, but one of the things that came out is George Zimmerman says to the deputy sheriff, he never identified himself. And so, in a situation like that, you teach a child, you ask her, who are you? Who are you? And also teach them, you know, how they can respond to it, they feel fearful, and want to protect themselves.
Okay, we have a question, we are off the card here. Can you please explain what needs to be in place to get a civil suit won against George Zimmerman?
Well, obviously, we already had, once, we had a competition, some competition services, but again, one of the problems we had in this case, we had various leaks from various people into the public domain. That was a little bit, some of it's confidential. We didn't not talk about it publicly, but we already, we brought it out as two people. We let it run out there, and it's a little, and y'all know that is.
We have another question right here.
Good evening.
Good evening. First, I want to thank the ones who feed, all the billions, bringing you out, and I'm glad that you did. I know it's a bad word, but it's not a bad word, for this, and it's been a peace, and I go for a cure. Um, several things happen, a couple of things into the trap, the judge threw out, did not allow the defense, I mean, the prosecutor, to view the video. Do you believe, or think anything that had anything to do with George, as far as being a former judge in the state of Georgia, like, did Alabama, Virginia, his dad was a former judge in Virginia? No, I don't believe it, but let me say this, no, overthink how much power a judge has, man. Um, they have somehow, and sometimes that power is wrestled. Um, again, I think this whole verdict is a combination of many things that led to this verdict. But also, I want to thank one of the persons that brought me here, who did the movie so deep, and Nelson, he said, "Oh, thank you." Yeah. This is a crowd, a little bit. He, uh, he asked me to come down, and, um, wanted to take care of this, talk to him, uh, they're good friends, thank you so much.
There are a question right here. Um, we know that besides civil rights, there also is the possibility of civil rights, by the federal civil rights violation, although many feel that that would be a high standard to me. Um, what are your thoughts on that, and is there anything the public can do to put pressure on the Justice Department to make that happen?
I think you all should, okay, there's a big rally happening, you know, very early soon, sadly, I think you all should participate in that, in that rally. Uh, well, let me give you a little insight of what's going to happen. You know, it's not too often that we actually see our government really go to bat for our people, and I think our federal government, under President Obama's, um, restrictions did some really great. Once the situation happened, and before they respond, the federal government did launch investigation, and it was one of the most powerful federal gatherings I've ever seen, um, from our US Attorney, to the Civil Rights Commission from Washington, to Tampa FBI, Land Department FBI, Personnel, Land Office, um, the US Attorney, and it must have been about 20 people, and it was very impressive, the amount of resources that the feds already put into this, so, don't think they weren't already here, they very much been involved in this case and, and working on it. Um, and let me say this, y'all, Eric Told, our attorney general, the best part of it, okay? I mean, look, think about it, the last two days, Monday, Monday, he went to DC for the Delphos, two weeks, he ended up basically, and he didn't mix any words. He didn't mix any words. And so, I don't think he needed a word, right? It may have been not work out, right? But I think he's looking to give y'all one of these ads, to check it out, and I think that that you should be encouraged by, and they're going to take a lot of the heat, y'all, they're going to take a lot of the heat, so, we gotta speak up and support the Justice Department, and to look into this, they have to share it one way or the other, but there are many people who want it to stop, but we have not one of them that is stopped.
We have a friend, we want to keep you tuned up, guys, because we appreciate you coming down to Atlanta, have a nice round of applause. Thank you. We're going to bring on our panelists here for our next segment. We will take more questions. We've been talking about this every day, we can stop with music when necessary, we believe that the radio was supposed to be about the community, we know that we have commercials or we have music, but in times like this, this is what we need to talk about, we need to have a discussion. Um, when you watch the verdict, compare Jody Harris to Casey Anthony, to O.J. Simpson, they all were nervous when the verdict came in. They all had no idea what was going to be said. George Zimlin looked like he knew what was going to be said. He didn't get it out, he wasn't sweating, and now that B-37 has come out, we know that the fix was in. There was no way you could have bullied him for 48 hours, I mean, how is that possible? And Jay Scott, oh, he got that bullie crushed, because somebody on Twitter said, "Don't do it," and a thousand people around, "You can do this today." I learned from a white criminal prosecutor today, how a jury is fixed. She's in Cal County, and you know how I still in Cal County, KKKOBV. I want to ask you a question. If you are a mother who doesn't work and has a child under six, you could be on the jury. Does anybody have a child under six that didn't work? So, who do you think's on that jury? That's how you fix it? If you've ever had a problem with a police officer in your life, anybody in the room? You are now dismissed from being on the jury. That's how you fix it. I learned that today, I learned that.
Can you believe B-37's husband is a lawyer?
When I was home, I talked to my wife about what happens at work, "Don't you blame B-37 and my mother since." That was a difficult problem, y'all, she was too high. She said, "My mother said he'll take care of everything." I've been there, I'm telling you, I ain't taking care of everything. The fix was in. Now, as we go on to our next panel, we're going to bring on our avenue, our personality, he's, he's known around the country, he's a, a very well-spoken intellectual brother, and he cleans up well. Ladies and gentlemen, Big Jim will take us to our next one.
Thank you, Brian, for allowing me to clean up. Good evening, y'all, Atlanta. Good evening. Um, this is the first time many of you have eaten me, um, due to the community, um, it's a shame that this has to be the first time that I am meeting you, but it's for what I consider to be one of the greatest causes that can be in the future by our black brothers, so, that's all we're, um, just a quick thank out to myself and from the Bronx, New York. Anybody from New York knows, young black kids, New York, the police don't always get together, so, and, and growing up, I've gone through situations like this, they happen to me for me and my family to come to this far, but I could immediately empathize with how it went down, just from being a young black kid in the Bronx, uh, Shuckers Uloos here, we grew up together in New York City, so, it's, it's just a shame that we have to be here, but we going to be here, because there's a good reason to be here. Um, our next segment of the program tonight will allow you, the audience, to hear from the young leaders in our civil, uh, civil rights movement today, a lot of things that said about the need or lack thereof for civil rights organizations. Some people feel like organizations like the NWAACP and others are maybe outdated, passe, and no longer relevant. Yet it was the National Action Network and Reverend Al Sharpton that helped lead the call to action in the Traylon Martin case. Without those marches, the rallies, protests, and engagement for the people like yourselves, uh, George Zimlin would have never been arrested, that law stood trial, so please, continue to sustain the age, as we said. On the eve of the 50th anniversary of the I Have Dreams to be inspired, 50 years, a pivotal moment in civil rights, what we see is our great black leaders that we've all grown up to and some of you grew up with, uh, starting to age, and those questions are, who will take the torch and press on? Our panelists are here to discuss what young people are doing in the civil rights arena now, and why these organizations are still necessary. Uh, to my far left, your right, we have Hank Stewart from the Georgia People's Agenda, please give him a round of applause. So, the next name is Mary Pat Hector from the National Youth, uh, she's the National Youth Rights Coalition. Good evening, thank you for being here. Over the way, perhaps, delayed by the rain, and we'll have Elder Denise King, CEO of the King Center, sitting right here. To my right, I have Nikki Wright, we have Jared Hons, an SCLC board member. We have Nancy Clay Johnson, president of the Urban League of Greater Atlanta, and Dr. Blackman, right? And last, and certainly not these, we have Daniel Blackman from Rainbow Push here as Now, what I'm going to do, I'm going to talk to you, um, Mr. Blackman, I'm going to offer each individual two minutes to kind of discuss what your organization is doing currently, um, and how you seek to engage and cross that bridge between, we'll say, my generation and older, and the generations that are coming up now. Mr. Blackman.
Thank you so much. Go ahead and give yourselves a little can. Before I, before I even open up and give, uh, any comments and, and the purpose of the existence and why Rainbow Push Coalition is so important, um, I want to let you all know that in the midst of the rain and tree limbs falling and thunder, we still showed up, and that's what is now, so, we need to, you know, we're here. And I'm going to take too much time on, on the, on the explanation of Rainbow Push Organization, or what the organization, um, focus on specifically, what I want to say today is, the organization, Rainbow Push Coalition, which was founded by Reverend Jesse Jackson, is an organization focused specifically on just making sure that people like you and I, uh, stood up for on a regular basis. We're focused on voters' rights, I don't know how many of you are, are familiar with the Voters' Rights Act, that was recently compromised, our organization, the Rainbow Push Coalition, the Coalition for People's Agenda, and any of the organizations that are here today, our whole focus is to make sure that our community is educated, is politically in position to be registerable, to mobilize, and each and every one of us to vote, and make sure that when we get registered, we actually show up at the polls, like, we're going to do since this Traylon Martin passed, we're going to make sure we show up next year, and year after that. And even, even if President Obama leaves office, we're going to show up in record numbers again, because we're going to make sure this never happens again.
Thank you. Next, we have, um, we have Nancy Clay Johnson, president of the Urban League of Greater Atlanta.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. First, I want to just briefly make sure you know what the Urban League is all about. Like Rainbow Push, like NAACP, SCLC, Georgia Coalition for People's Agenda, we are a civil rights organization too. We've been around for 103 years, and our focus, our goal, is on economic empowerment. So, we have been a human service provider for 103 years. What does that mean?
1910.
1910, us as a family. Here's the thing, we're here for our community. Our focus, without compromise, is helping African Americans achieve their highest human potential. What I want you to leave here with tonight, if you didn't know it before, the Urban League is where you can come and always know that there's someone there who cares about what is going on in your, whether, whether it's, I'm out there, I'm looking for a job, whether it's, I want to upgrade my skills so I can make more money, I'm about to lose my house, and I need help, I want to buy a house, and I want to know how, I want to start a business, a growth one I have, and if you're a young person, we want you to learn about careers for the future, finish school strong, and be ready for careers in life. So, we're here to help with those fundamental issues, and later on, I'll tell you about some specific programs that we have that I was super excited about, to help our young adults, 18 to 24.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Jared Hons, SCLC board member.
I know the one thing we did right was the day that we started the fight. Keep your eyes on the prize. Hold on, hold on. I'm here representing one of the oldest and most vibrant civil rights organizations, the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, an organization founded by the armpit Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Dr. Joseph Lowery, and Dr. Martin Luther King. And one of the issues that did so much to be the catalyst for change in the civil rights movement of the 1960s, but I'm here to tell you that SCLC is not dead, we are alive and well, we are bridging the gap by enhancing our, so these students represented our youth department, our model is to redeem the soul of America. What is its soul? Our new youth police department is entitled soul, students organized, united, and leadership. And where we do it, we train young people and non-voters, going into middle schools and high schools, and encouraging them to be trained as opponents and non-voters. We will be having, having a youth forum on Saturday at 11:00 PM. You can contact the SCLC headquarters, the details at 404-522-1820. And we look to see you at the 50th anniversary of the March of Washington, our convention with the Hill, where we will also have a session on Canadian rights, where we will be discussing economic justice and economic empowerment in our community.
Thank you, Brian. We will now hear from, uh, Mary Pat Hector, who is the National New Director for the National, uh, National Act, the Nation Action Network.
National Action Network. My name is Mary Pat, I'm here representing National Action Network, and one thing, well, I'm not fair to one of the oldest civil rights organizations, but one of the most vibrant, um, and National Action Network is really part of other organizations, making sure that the Justice Department, the Justice Department, law, uh, the part of other organizations, making sure that we do, um, get justice for Traylon. I know that I'm the youngest, um, person from hand, so, people, 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 I can say on our, who live in these, every day, um, you know, a lot of people are saying that young people are not involved, or, you know, one thing that I think that we can do as young people is making sure that we go to these rallies and these marches with our parents, and not only just that, but we got to be comfortable, a lot of young people, I think, have forgotten, um, the, the people who die for, for our rights. But now, it's back to Traylon Martin, our eyes are open, but we see that the world has not changed like Dr. Martin Luther King. And then open our young people's eyes, and you know that you don't have to all go forward Facebook and Twitter and say any things about other people and their races, because not everybody is racist, and some people are standing up for Traylon Martin, and I'm like, um, that's just a number of National Action Network, National Action Network, see you please.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from, uh, Henry Blackman, oh, yeah, Hank Stewart, I'm sorry, from the Georgia People's Agenda.
If you want to be important, if you want to be great, if you want to be recognized, recognize he and she who's greatest among you should be a sir. That's the definition of greatness, I give you the definition of greatness, it means everyone can be great, because everyone is a sir. Do you know what it was called to be a sir? Not to make yourself to convert to be a sir, and no, please, to our artists, our service eyes and their, sir, or the second thing, or throw out any innocent business, sir. You only need a heart of a race, a soldier, my love, of you to be that sir. The Georgia Coalition for People's Agenda was founded on service. Now, the Joseph Alfred Lowery, and, 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 and the primary focus of the Georgia Coalition for People's Agenda is service, education, mobilization, and get out, we work hard on getting out to both educating our folk, mobilizing, and education. And so, you can get involved, really, uh, with the Georgia Coalition for People's Agenda, because if you're a part of SCLC, the Rainbow Push, the Urban League, then you are a part of People's Agenda. We are one organization that brings everybody together under one house.
Thank you very much. And we heard that all of the early days came, uh, come up today, just after the role, uh, of an announcement, uh, someone left a light timer. Uh, there's a Jan Wa, George, BQ33CP, you ain't going nowhere, if you don't realize that, I turned your light timer. Um, again, as we're for the early days, King, again, we're going to ask some questions from the audience, I have a question, and particularly, um, for, for, let's say, the Urban League, lots of people, I know- Lots of people under my age have no idea what the Urban League is about. They have no idea. They have, they've barely been taught about segregation. They have no idea what it's like to use a different bathroom, to not be able to walk in the front door, to be called hallway, or the edward, or whatever have you. What are some of the things that these traditional organizations can do to cross the pond between understanding, between the organization and their importance, and the young people who have no idea, who weren't around or been taught the importance of said organization?
I think those are the ones we have to talk to. And at the Urban League, we, one of the things that attracted me to this movement is we have an auxiliary called the Urban League Young Professionals. It is open. Yeah. We got young professionals in this group. And so, you know, it's all about reaching out and building a legacy and leadership for our organizations. Because without people bringing our young people in so they can learn and serve and volunteer and help our community do the things we need to do, our organization is a lack. And that's why you see this glory and leadership, I think, that people are so concerned about. We gotta cultivate awareness that way. The good news is, NAACP is doing that, SCLC is doing that, we've got it now. And I think there was a time that that gap was there, and we didn't reach out and engage our young people. We need them for a number of reasons. They've got skills we don't have. You all know how to reach people at much greater levels. And now, forever, with our voting rights on the line, if it was ever a time to make sure we help our community understand the system, the system, the way it works, this country runs on laws. And the people who make the laws are the people we elect. But if we stay corn, the wrong people can live in it. And so, and...
Thank you very much. Before we get to our questions from the audience, as I mentioned, we are approaching the 50th anniversary of the Island Dreams Beach, now in the building, Elder Brandy's King, CEO of the King Center, please give that a round of applause. Our father's work and our continued work is one of the reasons we even able to be here talking about a trial, having a black attorney do justice, that we get our president for that act. So, I would love for you, I'm just keen to offer what some of the things you have going on, and how your organization plans to bridge the gap between your father's work and what needs to be done now.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you all for that welcome. I apologize for my lateness. I actually did just getting back from Montgomery, Alabama. We took a group of young people, both to Montgomery, America, and Alabama, to reconnect with that history so that they have real places to touch base with and understand it as a part of what we have every summer called the Now and Counters, the Nonviolence Opportunity Watch. It was actually birthed last year after April 11th, after the trade on. And I thought about how George Zimmerman was on a non, on a neighborly watch. And what came to me is that we needed to develop a summer camp where we educate and train the young people in my father's philosophy and principles and tactics of nonviolence. And we called it Nonviolence Opportunity Watch to help young people watch for opportunities to employ nonviolence. And I kept thinking, you know, if George Zimmerman had been exposed that way, that might have turned out differently. And so, we just finished with a camp last month. It's smaller than we, because I really believe that you have to work with a small opportunity to accomplish, and you don't miss anybody. And we had a group from Detroit that came out, and New Mexico, and different places around the nation. But we had a smaller group this time, which is the second time that they have come from Cyprus. And many of you know, there's a lot of conflict over in Cyprus between the Turks and the Greeks. And the group that came last year had a transformation and went back to cheer with some of the other Turks and Greeks, young people there, and they were excited about coming back. So, I just left Alabama with a group of them. And so, that's the work. We are devoted to really educate and train people in the principles and tactics of nonviolence. Because at the end of the day, violence will never end violence, hate will never end hate. And if we don't train and educate people in the principles of nonviolence and steps and nonviolence, they will understand our rules over and over again. And so, that's the work that I dedicated to, devoted to, whether I'm at the cancer or not at the cancer.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna ask that, Steve, if you have a question for the panel, to raise your hand, please. If anyone on the panel, we can get to them with a card and, and write your question down. We have Kendra G. and Cratchit for the Ryan Kemp, we want to show them to the audience. If you have a question for anyone on the panel at all, please raise your hand, Kendra G.
Here we have Selenia. She has a very popular question. It's on about...
Trade on Martin is my other name because I'm here. I lived in a little bubble. I wasn't concerned about anything in the world because my life is good. And I vote for the big election, but I have no idea how to vote for the smaller elections with prosecutors and judges and the bench. I don't know where to go to find out if I'll be called, or to find out who's going with that. I mean, the hell of that. My son, right here, he asked me, Mommy, why are you just going into trade on?
Good question. I would just suggest the Georgia Coalition for the People's Agenda every single solitary Tuesday, and from 12 to 2. You can learn, ask questions. It's grassroots, on the ground, local education and engagement. And Helen Butler, I just want her to stand up. She misses to teach the people, and anybody that's in the state, I would be a call.
Also, man, just to let you know, one thing that I think is important for everybody here at home is whenever you get a day, because for some people, you may work at 12 o'clock. You know, we understand that. But it's conversation that we're having today, it's these companies before you leave. You can write your address before I host it as long as I need to. But if there's anyone here that needs to learn more about voter education, we'll make sure we get your information and ask about the potential of you.
Thank you very much. Kendra G. Got a question here from a young man named Melissa. Go ahead and ask your question.
What can I do to be a leader among the viewers?
I'm 15 years old, and I've been involved ever since I was a little kid. When you have been having boys, and a lot of times, you know, you're in the politics of, people don't take you serious because you're so young. But it's just you being strong, saying, no, enough is enough. Because, you know, Dr. King was a great man, and who stood behind Dr. King, who stood, who was his foot. So, it was young people just like me. It was young people just like me. You say, well, you have boys, you're not listening to anybody else to say about you. And you're just, you're just speaking your mind, and you hear it.
And I think also, parents have to make sure we put our children in place. We, uh, we same age, and we same age, you know, this, if we run our kids to a football field, we gotta run them to the beach. We're the same age. And when you do a parent teacher conference, and we gotta do a better job protecting you. If we would've told trade on Martin to call 911, what if we would've told him to call 911? If we would've got the phone and called 911, there'd have been at least two records of 911. And so, we gotta do a better job as adults of training you. And so, it's not just on you, it's on us too. We have failed our young people, and we could lose this thing in our lives immediately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Well, where's your friend?
He's right there. He's still standing. He's right there.
Before you finish, I just wanna suggest there's a member here in the leadership, and we need to mentor him. And so, before he's, look at the best, uh, victim. Because a lot of times, you miss those opportunities. We push people out before their time, and their parents, because they don't think they should. So, we need to build it, and somebody who's putting their arms around to take it all, since he was trying to...
Because he was special, because I was just like, I got you. I'm sure that you're still for you. You do real part of this, you're a part of this, you're a part of this. And when I got the foundation, you're a part of that. Make sure, make sure your mom, uh, you make sure you see this before you leave, please.
And I just wanted to add, I'll go close up and follow the young men and women in here. Peer pressure works both ways. They can be good peer pressure, and they can be bad peer pressure. If you see your friends acting up, you ain't gotta be with them. And sometimes they'll take the key from you that you don't wanna hang out with them. They'll be like, well, maybe I shouldn't do this. So, there is good and bad peer pressure. You don't have to succumb to either. You can always be an individual. Kendra G.